Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scovano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to thank the boys in the back, Rodden Woodell and Connor Childers, who are working behind the scenes to produce the broadcast of the board meeting on Channel 20. Thank you, guys. I don't believe we have the students here to recognize, but we were going to recognize the National Merit Award winners, so we'll do that at another time. So we'll move on then to petitions and communications, which we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during the petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to our Board Policy 2.230, the board, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions in order to allow sufficient time for the business of the board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner. Asking that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker be allowed no more than two minutes. It's not appropriate to address individual board members and individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. We all have one speaker tonight, so we thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. And welcome back, Lisa Jackson. Okay, so you'll need to turn the mic on there. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Thank you.
So last week, I called, left messages for the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent. Neither of them called me back, so I'm here to make sure that my voice is heard. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a reentry meeting at West Middle School with the family. This child was suspended for 10 days and recommended for expulsion. So we met with the seventh grade principal at first, and I guess the best word to describe him would be novice. He didn't have a lot of answers to questions, but he actually sought guidance from his building principal. The building principal then met with us and just showed a blatant disregard for the parent, for the student, and for me. Now, when it comes to me, I'm very unbothered by behavior like that, but I am bothered when that type of behavior is displayed to parents and to students. As a board member, I sat at that table for eight years, and I have guiding principles that guided the work that I did. One of those is servantship. I truly believe in order to lead people effectively, you have to be able and willing to serve them. I also believe that as a district, parents and students don't serve us, we serve them. And I think that's something that the district has failed to do, because without these families entrusting their precious kids to us, we would cease to exist. That's just the way that it is. So to treat a family so disrespectfully is actually shameful, and it's intolerable. I guess I'll close my comments by saying that one day, your misdeeds are going to catch up to you. This district needs to do better by serving families, especially the majority-minority population in this district. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll move on then to board member comments. Are there any board members who have comments for tonight? Mr. Connor.
I just wanted to say thank you to Cherry Valley Elementary School Representative Joe Sosnowski. Did do a walkthrough of the building, and we had a good time, and the student-led tour was excellent. The students did a really good job, and so thank you to everybody for accommodating that, and it was a good tour.
Ms. McCulloch?
I would like to bring to everybody's attention that the National Alliance on Mental Health, on mental illness, the Northern Illinois Chapter, is hosting Mental Illness Awareness Week, which is October 7th through the 12th. And during that week, they're having several informational, educational, and fundraising events regarding mental illness and breaking the stigma. So I have a list. There's a kickoff October 5th and 6th at the Rockford Area Arts Council Fall Scene, for those of you who attend that. On the 7th, the Rockford Register Star is going to do a hand-in-hand signature campaign, and they'll debut it that day. On October 9th, at Nordloft Center at 6:00 PM, there's a presentation called "The Faces of Mental Illness Education Program." October 10th, Peach Ranch is having a Tip Night fundraiser. October 11th, Shelchakar Ministries Jubilee Center Harvest Fest. And October 12th, from 12:00 to 1:30, Memorial Hall, an annual rally for mental health where lunch is provided. There is more information if any of those tickled your interest, or went too fast, or you just want to see what it's all about. You can visit the NAMI Northern Illinois Facebook page or website for more information. And thank you, Ms. Peacock, for providing that. She wanted to be here tonight, and she was a member of the Education Committee for many years, and she's really invested in our students and the mental health, not just of our students, but everyone in the community. So hopefully, some of you can attend or support.
Thank you. Mr. Segal?
Thank you. I spent my first two and a half years using my public speaking time to try and shine a bright light on things that were going particularly well in the district and basically just trying to highlight happier things. But this school year, I started off memorializing Robert Hernandez, the young man from Jefferson who died, and then the next meeting, Alia Moore. And tonight, you know, we mourn Marshaun Williams. I've got to feel like the Jefferson community must be grieving greatly, her family, her friends. We've lost some really bright kids, and I think there were few brighter than the young Ms. Williams. And my condolences to the family. She's going to be missed.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, so I'd actually like to take this opportunity, because the media is here present today, and I just want to say that I think the district is laser-focused on academic achievement, and we, as parents, got to be our own advocates for academic achievement. So I guess what I'm saying is, for parents out there, if you are not seeing your children being challenged, if the courses are not the rigor that you would expect, if you see anything that we can improve on when it comes to academic achievement, please give us a call. Please contact us, because we, as a district, are hopefully going to be focused on academic achievement and outcomes this year. Thank you.
Is that it? Any others? Okay. Now, we'll move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items. The meeting minutes of September 11, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request logs, contracts under 10,000, and travel. The recurring contracts for Edmentum Study Island, Edmentum Exact Path, the Newcella PRO License Agreement, the NoRed Inc. Software License Agreement, the other consent items, including the workers' compensation settlement agreement, the monthly investment report for August 2018, the RPS Managed Work Change Order Logs, the new school construction change order logs, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including these following items. The appointment of Michael Phillips as the 12-month Executive Director of Facilities, the HR organizational report and an addendum, and student discipline, unless otherwise modified below. The board then adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases, in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without prior written permission of the principal. Student 4209 is expelled for the remainder of the 2018 through the first semester, through 2018-19 school year, through the first semester of the 1920 school year. Student number 4206 and 4208 are expelled for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year. The expulsion for student 4207 is held in advance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year, the 1819 school year. And the following students have received EIAs. Students 3596, 3597, 3599, 3600, 3601, 3602, 3603, 3604. Uh-oh. And there, yeah, there's a typo there. 3605, 3606, 3607, 3609, 3610, student 3611, 3612, 3613, and student 3614. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the super tense report. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mr. Scovano. Very shortly, I'm going to cede the floor to Dr. Munson, Mrs. Detman, and Dr. Vosberg to go over the slides that are laid out here, but I do want to provide a brief introduction. What today we are going to be doing is providing a very brief overview of the work we're going to be doing at the school level to drive some of the urgency I know exists at the board level to the school level, and really focusing on principals, feeling confident that they are in a place where they can work with their faculty to align school-based goals with their, what we call PLC goals, which are content area team or grade level team goals. And so you've all heard me talk about the importance of making sure our outcomes are aligned, starting with the student, all the way up to the teacher, to the teams of teachers, to the school, which will ultimately drive outcomes in the district. And Dr. Vosberg is going to close us out, talking about the timeline for that work. We're going to give you very specific time-based commitments of when these outcomes are going to be happening, and when the trainings are going to be occurring at the building level, to ensure that this capacity is built and supported. He will also have a slide that talks about what you are going to hear from us in terms of performance on state tests and how we're doing so far with first non-embargo data, and then later with embargo data. Dr. Munson is going to kick us off by talking about the purpose of the scorecard and how this ultimately is bigger than just a mechanism to say how each school is doing. It ultimately will be the lever we use to make sure resources and support and capacity is built at the school level to ensure that we're improving our outcomes. And in between there, Mrs. Detman is going to talk about, again, what is in that scorecard. In future meetings, we're going to go into much more detail about the mechanics of the scorecard, how things are weighted, how we're going to support that. But for today, with the board present here, we wanted to, again, walk you through why we are doing this, how it will work from a general perspective, and specifically, how we're going to drive that capacity from into 44 schools, and ensuring that principals feel that they have the confidence and the capacity to connect their work as a school with the work of teachers and ultimately with students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Munson to kick us off.
So as Dr. Jarrett said, we have been on a journey to develop a system-wide scorecard. And the purpose behind the scorecard was truly to define what success looks like across our district and to ensure alignment of all goals from the student level to the district level. So the purpose truly is to define success, align resources, and improve outcomes for our students. This was a collective analysis that came from principals and different constituents across the district, and the collaboration between our team, Continuous Improvement, the school supervision team, and curriculum to ensure that we truly aligned our efforts to ESSA, which is our standards for school improvement. And the first journey we took is we really wanted to ensure that we were having a cohesive conversation across the district. So we wanted to align the work so that schools and the district were looking at the same data at the same time, in the same way, to monitor progress. And that sounds like a simple feat, but it's not. We needed to ensure that we had systems in place, and we'll talk more about that now and get more in-depth across the year on what that looks like, to ensure that we were all having the same conversation on alignment for student success across our entire organization. But it really starts with the students. It starts with our classroom goals, to ensure that that center support for all of our students is aligned to their grade level, which is aligned to their school, and aligned to the district, to ensure that we are all working together to hit the same targets over time. And within that scorecard, we were thoughtful about truly looking at progress monitoring measures and metrics that we'll share again over time in our progress monitoring updates, to ensure that we know what success looks like, and that we can turn and transform when we need to, when we don't see the success that we are achieving over time. And it truly starts with that classroom goal, with the student. And as Dr. Jarrett said, and as we will continue to talk throughout the year, our goal this year, our focus is on alignment. And what can we do cohesively, what can we do as one organization to ensure all of our schools, all of our goals, and all of our efforts are aligned, to ensure that all of our students succeed? So what you will hear across the year is talking about students as a whole, talking about schools. We're going to talk about specific subgroups. We're going to talk about efforts and progress through grade levels. And we're going to talk through the lens of specific metrics in the scorecard. As we say, we are going to truly shine our flashlight and focus on three general areas, on quality instruction, climate and culture, and continuous improvement. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Detman to talk specifics about what that scorecard looks like.
It's important to us that every level, every school in our district, whether special program or one of our neighborhood schools, has metrics that really matter. And so we developed seven unique scorecards to make sure that we had the metrics in place that truly matter for each level and for each program. So we have a unique scorecard for early childhood, with a strong focus on social-emotional skills and self-regulation. We have a unique scorecard for elementary, with a focus on map growth. Middle school, map growth, and then also introducing on-track status. High school, with more of a focus on on-track status and PSAT to SAT growth, leading to graduation rate. Montessori, allowing them to capture their own version of grades in alignment with the Montessori method, and allowing them pre-K8 to have metrics. Marshall, as well, to have unique metrics, and Barber as a K8 school and special program. As you can see from the breakdown, and you've seen this before, we have three core areas that we're going to be measuring on the scorecard, the bulk of which is quality instruction. We think that's really important. It's the core of our work and where our most important metrics really lie. That said, we also have key metrics in climate and culture for a safe learning environment and continuous improvement to continually push forward. I'm going to break those down just slightly and quickly as we move through here. The 70% of quality instruction is really focused on four key areas. The first is attainment. Those are those proficiency, grade level assessments. The PARK SAT are examples. Secondly, growth. We know that attainment is on the horizons, but how do we know that we're growing and that we're making progress along the way? It's really important to us that we monitor that over time. Third is that we're closing the achievement gap. The way that we're addressing that in the scorecard is really through an attention to detail on our subgroup data and monitoring that closely over time. And then finally, on-track. On-track can't start freshman year, it has to start much sooner. The next portion is 20% devoted to climate and culture, which is where we're turning our attention to a positive and safe learning environment for our students and for our staff. Our main metrics here are parent, student, and staff surveys, monitoring attendance, and then also monitoring that critical communication mechanism of "let's talk" that gives us an open door to our parents and our community. And then finally, the value, really, of continuous improvement. And this is where the daily work, as Dr. Jarrett references often, the 20-mile march every single day for students and for teachers, comes into play. These are all the things that we do, from intentional lesson planning to strategic assessment design, that helps us know that every day, we're moving closer to the target. Some key areas of focus to draw your attention to, and things that we'll continually come back to as we report to you as a board, is first, what are our strategic goals? In general, across all seven scorecards, our goal is to meet or exceed the state average where available, or a national standard where available. Secondly, we have a focus for schools. The focus for schools is alignment, aligning all the way from a student's goal to a principal's goal, to move the district as a whole. And finally, district support. Where do we fit in? We want to make sure that schools have data that is accurate, that's been verified and validated. We want to make sure that we've provided meaningful and in-depth, high-quality training on data analysis. We also want to make sure that we are intentional in aligning our resources with what our data tells us, and that we're listening as schools are making that daily 20-mile march. And so now pass it over to Dr. Vosberg, who will lead you through the next several weeks.
All right. Key milestones for this fall to support the work that's just been described. Obviously, it's going to require a lot of professional development and extra support, beginning tomorrow. Once a month, we do have our all-principals meeting. All levels of principals meet right here in this boardroom, and go through some exercises in professional development. Our focus this year, as previously mentioned, is around scorecard development and alignment. And so tomorrow, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about, and our principals have had access to the scorecard and have given us input, but really tying it together to make sure their goals at the building level, their PLC goals, their teacher goals, are all aligned to meet those strategic needs for our district. We also plan to do a data review, looking at our most current map data, which disclosed last week, and also looking at some historical trends with SAT and PARK. Unfortunately, we don't have that most recent data, probably for another three weeks. Also, on the list to accomplish tomorrow is our preparation for the SIP date with their staff. And we're helping assist our principals to deliver a consistent message across the district for all of our teachers to get a very similar presentation. And that'll occur on October 3rd. The emphasis, again, with SIP and with our teachers, is around goal alignment, their grade level goals, their PLC goals, which will drive the work, and ensuring alignment between what they do, what the buildings are looking to strive for, and of course, what the district needs to do as well. Next key date is October 10th. That's when we will kind of do a system check to make sure our PLC goals are rigorous enough, are in alignment, and are appropriately supported by the principal and the district office. Goal monitoring will be a key component to this as well. On October 10th and the 16th, we have some training set up for our principals and assistant principals and other administrators in the district with Decision Ed and our data dashboard. This is going to give us a lot more support with timely location of data. Right now, that's not always the case. And this will also allow us to not only access data, but drill down and do deeper dives into the data to support, really down to the classroom and student level where we see a need. On the 24th, we start to finalize some of the last pieces of the scorecard and work on the scale and weighting system to be able to populate the scorecards with actual data, to see where each of our schools are set up, as far as their own status within our district. On the 28th, another all-principals meeting, gives us an opportunity to look at our actionable data from 2018, which is our PARK that we took last April, and our SAT, which we took last April, and start to goal-set and prepare for this spring for, not the PARK anymore, but the IAR, Illinois Assessment of Readiness, and the PSAT to SAT suite. Also, this will give us an opportunity to kind of drill down into our subgroups, which is a heavier emphasis this year with ESSA and our state accountability measures. We've got a lot of schools that have large gaps with their subgroups, and those gaps have put us, will put us in status with the state. And then finally, when do we report this back to the board? Well, we've got a couple of dates on the calendar here. The 16th is our next community of the whole, where we can share non-embargo data. On the 6th, we can share the full report after the embargo's been released on Halloween. And then weekly updates will continue to focus on the progress of this rollout. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions for any of the presenters? Mr. Escobedo?
So this is a very good start, very good high-level overview. Thank you for taking the initiative and all this work. But I guess what I'm interested in seeing is, is there, if things are going to be differently this year, is there a plan out there that has been created? What, who, when, what, what is being done throughout the year, so that we make sure that things are going to be changing this year, that we're focusing on academic achievement? What, secondly, what metrics are we tracking on a weekly basis, inchstones, at a district level, to ensure that we don't wait till the end of the year to know what happened? Regular reviews, what quarterly reviews metrics are we going to be tracking throughout the year as well? So I guess, in short, I'm interested in seeing a detailed plan that shows all the different initiatives that we are taking as a district to make a significant dent on academic achievement this year, and ensure that this year becomes a turnaround, turnaround year, that, you know, we're actually making a dent, that we're not here another year looking at less than, you know, expected standardized test scores. So I'm really interested in seeing a detailed plan, again. I hope that's within our board rights to be asking for that detailed plan, so we can monitor. And secondly is, with that detailed plan, what help is needed from administration? What do you need from the board? Is it, what help do you need from the community? What are some of the actions that we as a board member should be taking as well? So not to lay it all on administration, but what can we do to help? Do we, yeah, so I guess, you know, you guys are the experts. You guys know what to do. I'm interested in seeing a one-year academic achievement detailed plan as to how things are going to be turning around this year.
Thank you. I'll start off, and then I'll defer to the team to interject. I think those are two really, really important questions. I think the first question, in terms of is there going to be one big plan, the rollout of a scorecard system that allows every single school in our district to know, aligned to federal and state standards, how the school is performing, both in terms of the big picture, how how are, how much progress are they making towards being above or at state averages if they are not at that point yet? Uh, combined with how much progress did they make on an annual basis? The scorecard is the one-year plan and it's the multi-year plan to achieve that. Well, we're, uh, rather than a district-wide approach to move forty-four schools that is centrally enacted, what we are centralizing is our expectations for schools to hit targets and we're providing goal-setting support at the school level and oversight to ensure that team of teacher goals and individual teacher goals, which is sections three, four, and five of the scorecard, all line up to achieve that result. So rather than one big one-year plan, Mr. Escobedo, what you'll be seeing is forty-four one-year plans that are designed to have schools at the building level where they know their faculty and their students, uh, with support from the district and with clarity from the district about how that applies to moving the needle. That is what the focus of our principal meeting is actually tomorrow, is making sure every principal in that room feels confident that their goal for the building is, will matter in terms of moving the needle on student achievement and will be able to be supported by really good teacher-team goals so that student work plugs into that. So what we will be able to do on a regular basis in terms of progress monitoring is you will be able to see three times a year, um, w- in some cases, in some cases, a weekly basis, things like attendance and things that change more frequently. And some things, like the state testing, unfortunately is annual and it's, uh, you know, here we are, two months into the school year of this year, still waiting to get the, uh, it won't be for two months in the school year that we can make public, uh, and have verified the, the PRC data, which is the most important metric in our scorecard. So there are certainly some challenges with that. Um, and I would say if there is any area for concern that, that we have for community support, I think it comes down to, I think we have to continue to advocate in Springfield to ensure that we have a state test that gets back as quickly and as frequently to our faculty and staff as our MAP testing does. I think it's unacceptable to have a state test that, where you have a, a fifth-grade student that becomes a sixth grader and we find out about that student's state testing results when that student is well into the school year of their sixth-grade year. I don't think that's an effective way to run an accountability system or a support system as a state. But back to the first issue, I, I really think that's the, that is our perspective, is we believe very strongly in being very clear, uh, about what is expected of schools in terms of goals, in terms of our expectations for what success looks like through the scorecard, and then, and very clear about expecting that all teachers in the building and all certified and non-certified support staff have the ability to contribute to that success and that we will then make adjustments at the school-by-school level as opposed to trying to centralize it as a district. Our ultimate success as a superintendent and as a board and, and as a cabinet and other members of our team, I believe should come from the collective success of forty-four schools rather than trying, uh, and, and having more schools winning and making annual progress uh, towards that state average and towards, uh, their growth targets for their students and making progress in their subgroups. So there will be much, much more to come in the next six weeks at upcoming board meetings, weekly updates, uh, et cetera, where we are going to very specifically outline, uh, what are, what each school will be doing, uh, to make that progress. And you'll get a much deeper dive into what's in the scorecard. What we didn't want to do is share the scorecard as a hypothetical, so we wanted to make sure that you have real live data to know where everybody's sitting when we roll that out. Um, I don't have any other big ask from that, but I want to make sure that, I think you asked a really comprehensive question, so I want to make sure that, um, other members of the team have a chance to weigh in.
I suppose I would add, um, you know, so what's different about this school year? Um, and, and I think if I could sum it up, it would be that we have a clarified and unified language of alignment. Um, and we've done that through, uh, even down to, uh, a rubric for what defines an aligned goal. Um, so we've increased our language of alignment and our action of alignment uh, by really carefully and strategically planning the next several months of principal PD. Um, and then I would say, secondly, we've increased transparency. So as a team, as a central office team, we now have access to every single PLC goal across the district. Um, and that's so that we know how to align our resources and support where they're most needed and so that we can see any of those gaps in alignment to address them right away, not when the summative data comes out. Um, and so by increasing transparency, by clarifying our language of alignment, it's going to give us a leg up much faster than we have in academic years previous. I think this commitment to really, um, leveraging the time that we have with school leaders to focus exclusively around the scorecard and around that language of alignment will help us really clarify the work ahead.
Mr. Segal.
Not to get deep in the weeds and at the risk of asking a really incendiary question, can you explain what you mean by you've clarified the language of alignment? What does alignment as a classroom goal look like?
I think I'll start that and again, I'll let, um, Mrs. Dattman and the other team members. But, uh, real simple, in real simple terms, it means we want to have a system where it starts with a student goal. And if a student is taking, uh, a content area class like algebra or, uh, integrated math would be a better example, I guess, in, in high school right now, or if they are part of a grade level like fifth, like fifth grade. What we mean by alignment is we have a system that is very large and very complex and ultimately, we believe with this model, we will make success, we will be successful as an entire district at the board level. If that teacher goal or if that student goal connects to a classroom that's in a te- that a teacher has access to, that then connects to either a grade level or a content area team, that then connects to a school goal, that then connects to moving the, the entire district forward. And so that's in a very high level what we mean, uh, by aligning everything towards success. If you have an individual teacher who says, you know, I really want to teach this, this and that, and it doesn't move something like the SAT or it doesn't build skills that will help a student stay on track or improve their reading level, while those skills and ideas are nice, that lack, that lack of alignment, when you have limited time and a lot of work to do, is part of what our district continued needs to move forward. And then the larger you are, the more challenging this is. And that's why it's so important that the scorecard exists, because it's a way to be ultra-clear at the school level, all the way down to the student level about what success looks like. And I'll turn it over to Heidi or Mrs. Dattman to answer any other.
So I'm just going to take that one level deeper and give you in a practical example. Um, so we were out at, uh, one of our high schools, uh, last week and we were talking with their leadership team about how they know when a goal is aligned. And so we were able to develop a rubric that can be applied district-wide, K through twelve, that helps a leadership team really match against best practices and goal alignment. Here's what that means. It means that my goal includes all the students that I teach, um, in our PLC group. It means that it's aligned to my grade level content standard. It means that if I teach an area that's not ELA or math, my goal still matters and centers around a leverageable skill that's going to move students as a whole on their end exams, whether that be PRC or SAT. It also means that I understand what the standard is asking kids to do. We don't want goals that are set around rote memorization. That will not move kids. We want goals that are deep and meaningful and get to the root of what the standards are asking students to do at grade level. And then the last piece is that the assessment matches the standard. So we don't want to have a really deep and meaningful standard and a basic assessment. Then we have a mismatch in our data. We think that students are exceed- exceeding or achieving, but they haven't met the quality of the standard. And so that rubric leads, leads a leadership team through who the kids are, what the standard is, at what level, and if the assessments match. And it's okay at this point in time for a leadership team to say, we gathered twenty goals and we sent fifteen back for revision. That's great. That means that we're able to stop in real time before a goal is set and offer support where needed so that the time and energy that a PLC or even a single teacher is putting towards that goal is time and energy that matters to move kids forward. So that language of alignment, what I mean by that is there's a set of criteria that we all agree to and that's what a high-quality goal is. And we don't want to move on goals that are not high-quality and don't align to that rubric.
So I have, um, one more alignment question. And it's actually the s- the student being aligned with the content that's being created amongst the adults. I re- understand that the student's going to be a part of making that goal, but what happens when we have a student who is in fifth grade who is clearly not, uh, reading anywhere near that level, his numeracy is far below? How do you, um, align his goal with the other twenty-five-plus students in his class? Some who may actually be reading at his level, some higher, some maybe far beyond? Because it seems like, I, I think we, we may find that there are an, a significant number of students who fall into that's, that goal that needs to be set, which is get them reading to their grade level, which it doesn't matter how fancy the standardized test is if they're not reading it and under any comprehending it, uh, the, the test and the curriculum that supports it doesn't really matter. What, do we have a, I guess, one, do we have a sense of what, how many students are going to fall into that particular goal? With just to, just to learn how to read at their grade level?
So yes, all of the, um, all of the assessments that we are using as progress monitoring, uh, MAP, for example, provides a learning continuum and it allows us to pull reports and it shows us exactly where students are on an individual case-by-case basis. Having students set their own goals, which sometimes will take them to skills that are prerequisite to grade level, will still indeed set them on the trajectory to get to grade level. It will take some students longer than others. Um, it's what's called really personalized learning. Um, I know exactly what you need as your teacher and I'm going to help you set those short-cycle goals. Not only that, if you're, if you're very far behind, we have a tiered system of interventions that's going to give you extra time and we're going to give you more intense support along the way. Um, so we're currently building our multi-tiered system of support to do exactly that. And what the scorecard does is it really gives us our south pole. It lets us know where we need to be so that students along the way can make their own twenty-mile march, um, to keep going with the metaphor, um, that will help them get there. It may be unique for every student and where we're putting our focus right now is really on that PLC level as a starting point. Um, but we anticipate that we'll be able to drill down into that student goal-setting, um, mode or level, you know, pretty quickly. Many of our classrooms across the district are already doing it. Um, but to address specifically your concern, um, do we have an idea how many students are in that area? Yes, absolutely. We have the data from their MAP scores that help, uh, us categorize and group them for targeted skills instruction.
Mr. Dixon?
Partially you answered my question, that's why I kind of cut off. But, um, it was basically this. I, I, I see where we, where, where we're going far is the forty different schools. Um, there has, as, what are the measurements of the forty different schools? Because there are some schools that are going to need more help, need more, uh, uh, more one-on-ones, more personal timing. And so those are really what my question, the other part, you already answered, so I'm not going to even answer that. But those were, what are, what are, what are we going to use as measurements?
So all, yeah, I think that's an excellent question, Mr. Dixon. All forty-four schools will have essentially the only difference between the three special programs is that they're K-eight rather than K-five or six-eight. That's why we needed special ones for, for Barber and for Montessori and for Marshall. But they all are going to have common targets that we're going to hit for things like attainment, for growth, so how much are students growing? And, and what we're going to be able to do is meet students and schools where they are. So for some schools, they are already in our district, we have some schools that are above, are near the top of the state in terms of their performance, and we have some that are a long, long way away from the state average. And in all cases, we are going to acknowledge how far above or behind that target all of our schools are. That will be one way we will evaluate our schools. But to your point, the other way we'll evaluate our schools is, did they make progress as a school? Did they make progress as a grade level or contentary team? And did that individual teacher and student ultimately make one year's worth of progress? So that's where growth is going to be so important to us. If all we do is evaluate how far from the state average our schools are, we have simply sorted and selected our schools largely based on socioeconomic status and other factors that are large determinants of that. We also have to acknowledge that schools need additional levels of support in order to make that progress. And so that's going to be a big part of our conversation, is not only differentiating at the student level, but I believe over time, we will continue to expand federal dollar services as well as state and local dollars to provide differential resources for schools that need more support to ensure that all schools are making that annual progress towards their target. Um, and so that is at the crux of the matter of how we're going to be successful. Every school has to have a chance to be successful. And, and that success is an immovable standard, on the one hand, because everybody's got to make it to the south pole eventually or whatever our target is. But we also have to acknowledge that not everyone is a equal distance away from the goal. So we will be celebrating schools that make more than the annual progress towards that goal, because that will be a huge, huge work and we will provide more support to those schools that need it as well.
Mr. Escobedo?
Um, yeah, so I'm going to go back to my, uh, original comment and then, uh, another quick question. And sorry if we keep harping in this, but I think this is a very good discussion that we, we're having and appreciate that. Uh, so using the analogy of the twenty-mile march, uh, I get it that there's, you know, forty-four different plans, absolutely makes sense. At the same time, uh, if you've got forty-four different individuals running a twenty-mile march, it seems that we ought to have a collective guidance, collective goal, collective plan as to how we're going to achieve that twenty-mile march collectively. Some people can run, some can climb, uh, how do we pass the baton, what, that's, that's, continue the analogy. So for example, in the discussion here so far, I've heard items like scorecard, goal alignment, monitoring, uh, student focus, um, individual plans, individual school plans, personalized learning. I mean, just in this brief meeting, along, brief discussion. So it seems to me that personally, that there's going to be a high-level plan that governs how we are all going, how we are going to be marching as a district. And then, um, that's again, that's my, my comment. Then the que- my follow-up question is, for the forty-four individual plans, so I get the scorecard, uh, I'm assuming this individual plan, will that be to the detail that the school is going to be thinking, is going to be planning as to how they're going to change this year? That, and when will that plan be available from that specific, from, from schools? When is that plan going to be available? That I could say if I want to look at, you know, one of the struggling schools and see what they're doing differently, uh, what level of detail would that plan include?
Yes. So to, I'll start with your last question. What we are committing to is October twenty-fourth is the weighting and scales in the scorecard and our schools will be populated. At that point, we feel confident, we will have clean data, we will have first, we will have the early assessment data for this year. We will have non-embargo data, uh, available after October thirty-first. So at the school level, we will have that injected, uh, into the, into the equation by that point. And the, in terms of the plan, again, our plan is going to be to, a- and we can talk about, at future board meetings, we will continue to articulate what our plan is to support principals and to explain what is in the scorecard and to walk you through all the details of that. So that, I think we meet your needs of having kind of the guidance of how we are going to support forty-four schools is what I'm hearing from you on that. Um, but we will, we are very committed to a strategy that ensures that all principals receive a great deal of guidance on what their school goals should be based on a very clear scorecard, which gives very clear indications of what success looks like. But, and we are going to expect that they do that alignment work and they will ultimately be supported, but also be accountable for making progress towards their goal over the course of the year. So I think what we can share with you will be what guidance we're going and support we're going to give to schools as they make progress towards the scorecard. But at the end of the day, a lot of this work has But at the end of the day, a lot of this work has to be done by the people who are closest to the effort and to the action. It's done at the classroom level, it's done at the team of teacher level, and it's done at the school level. So we will certainly be able to report to the board regularly about how we are supporting principals and school capacity to do that work. But in terms of a centralized approach, it's really a centralized approach to have clear expectations, which is what the scorecard does, and to ensure that principals and teachers feel like they have the support and capacity to make sure all of that work connects together.
Mr. Connor?
Yeah, again, I apologize for taking a lot of, but I usually don't talk a lot, so I'll take one. I guess, yeah, we can continue going on and on, but, excuse me. You know, I've said this before to multiple individuals, but, you know, today is the twenty-sixth day of a hundred and seventy-two school days. Think about when you're putting this timeframe together. And again, the comment is, I mean, we gotta start driving with a sense of urgency. Every single day should matter. We can't wait, you know, every week that we delay, every month that we delay something, it's, it's ten, fifteen, twenty days into biting into the school calendar. And, and every hour counts, every hour counts. I guess I, I guess I just look forward to see our future discussions and keep monitoring throughout the year.
Mr. Connor?
So I think my questions are pretty much straightforward. First, thanks for the explanation and alignment. I had the same question as everybody else. First is for the scorecard itself. Do I assume that that will be physically kept in decision ed? And that it, that's the method also, that the year-over-year or whatever timeframes we have, it'll be tracked by us?
Yes, we're creating the dashboards now that, that match the metrics on each of the scorecards.
Okay, and that's all decision ed, I just, yep. And, and decision ed, if I remember, had methods of essentially equivalents of archiving data and handing things so we can have it around year after year. Yep. Okay. Do we cross-reference to funding sources at all on this? Either funding and/or sources, you know, by the schools? Do we, you know, like Title I or those kinds of things? Or that, is that a part of this?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I can turn it over to Ciar to add on this, but we have an up, we are really working hard to build on the Title I menu that we built last year. There will be Illinois and Power dollars that will be differential dollars for schools that have not made enough progress with, as Dr. Vosberg alluded to, either individual subgroups or school-wide. Those will provide additional resources for schools and status. Title I dollars, we freed up millions of dollars through some of the Title I reform that we've been able to achieve. And our Fund Ten dollars, our district dollars, which are a combination of state and local funding, we are continuing to build protocols and processes to push more dollars into schools. In fact, last year, one of the things we did was we took the one percent savings we found in central operations and pushed those into school-based budgets. So what Mrs. Yar and her team are gonna be doing as we kick off our budgeting season on October fifteenth is we are going to be building, and this is very much important in evidence-based funding because they want to see where the dollars are going, not at the district level, but at the school-by-school level. So Mrs. Yar has already started the process of building a school-based budgeting template, which will hold all of the school-based budgeting decisions on federal dollars as well as those local dollars. And the board will be able to see that as we build the budget this year. So budgeting is gonna be really exciting this year. I think we made a lot of progress last year with our whole-part-hole method. This year, I think what you're gonna see a lot different in the budgeting process is even more engagement and specifics around the way we are building school-based budgets. So Mrs. Yar, anything you wanted to add to that?
I would just add with our budget process, with the principals this year, as Dr. Jared had mentioned, that we're going to have this new template. And also as part of that template, it aligns, you have to align your strategic goals, so it fits in really nicely with the scorecard. So not only are we having the scorecard holding everyone accountable, but we also are aligning our resources in that same way. So what we're gonna be looking at as a cabinet, weights that we want to roll out this first, you know, this first year, which will be FY twenty. So we'll start this October fifteenth. So we're gonna have a cabinet meeting on October fifteenth where we're gonna have the budget kickoff and we'll be making decisions on how we want to implement this the first year. And then we'll continue down that path with putting more money out to schools and having principals align the resources where they need them.
Not only will the board be able to see how schools are performing and how effective we are being as a district in supporting schools, we are also going to be able to see how schools are investing their site-based dollars as well as our district dollars to support schools that are, that are struggling, as well as schools that are succeeding. And so that, that is one of the things I love about the new funding model in Illinois is they nudged us to do that, which is something we really wanted to do anyways, which is really highlight the resource, how schools are spending their resources as well as how our district is spending its resources to, to support schools. So I think that will be much more transparent as we build our FY twenty budget. We made progress with the Title I menu for FY nineteen, but I think FY twenty will be even more comprehensive. I think one of the ways we show the urgency that the board is doing such a great job of keeping in front of us is by showing that dollars, every dollar possible centrally is going to buildings and every dollar in buildings is going towards something that we really believe will move the needle at the building level. That's where the impact is the greatest, is at the building level.
So I'm clear on this. I understand where the budgeting would be in the actual finance system, but will that, those dollars be reflected in decision ed so that we can do reporting off of all that?
I think the last piece of that is, at this point, we are planning on, I've worked with President Soprano and Vice President Rollins. We had an initial meeting to talk with a vendor about the possibility of a concept that takes a lot of skill development at the building level and the district level. And that is the concept of academic return on investment. And so what we're going to be looking to do is, in very targeted ways, look at how our school-based and district-based academic investments move the needle based on metrics that are collected in that decision ed. So now that we have clean data, we feel like we are in a place as a district where we can start to measure the outcomes of district-wide programs as well as school-wide programs. So that's something I think we can look forward to. You will be hearing that PDSA from me in the, in the October season. Mrs. Yar and I are, we'll be working on that together. And again, in the budgeting season, you'll be able to see how that is gonna come into play with site-based as well as centralized budgeting.
I, I think I was less asking though about the actual calculation, but very straightforward. Will we be able to physically store it all sort of decision ed so I can see it side by side?
The financial piece of decision ed is not available right now, but I, I can pull almost anything out of Business Plus, which is where our general ledger dollars are. So our budget's there, you know, we're, we're fully utilizing that program now and we can pull out anything.
So we could do that really as a manual feed if we had to.
And sorry to be elusive in the way I answered the question. Essentially what'll happen is we'll have, we'll, we'll match those systems. So what academic return on investment really means in really basic terms is, how much did a program cost and how much did it move the needle on student achievement? And that will take the marrying or merging of those two systems.
I was going to frankly ask you a slightly more mechanical question just so that we actually have it available is, even if it's manual, I, I would think that's something from the IT side that.
Yeah, and the IS department has been great to support me and I've created many, many more reports, so we are not doing as much manual work in this last year and a half. They, they can create almost anything for me that I have imagined that I need and I get it within a week's time. So I really have that data right away. I also utilize Forecast Five analytics that we invest in.
Oh, that's right.
And that has given me very good data. I've been pulling a lot more reports out of that most recently because I'm analyzing going forward with the budget season.
This one, so we spent a lot of time on alignment. So the question I have is, and you don't actually have to answer this tonight, but I assume that we have a plan if students are not at their goal or grade levels as they set all this, because if it's alignment, I, you have to assume that there are some students that are not going to be there. So what's our, is that part of the planning on either remediation or?
So, you know, part of understanding a grade level standing, standard, and I won't get too technical, is understanding all of the skills that are necessary to be successful there. And, and that's what we kind of walk backwards into prerequisite skills to build students up to their capacity to the grade level expectations. And that's really the work of our multi-tiered systems of support framework, MTSS, which is new this year. And we're in the process now of identifying what's called learning ladders to guide teachers and interventionists to do that work with each child and also then specific interventions. And you'll be hearing in probably about six weeks about a pilot for literacy intervention in upper elementary.
So would I imply from that that if we have a student who's really not attained their goals for third grade, they're not gonna go on to fourth grade until they do get those skills?
No, I, I think what we're gonna do is continue to expose students at any grade level to grade-level curriculum and then backfill that to ensure that they hit their growth target. For some of our students, and, and in some schools, unfortunately, a large majority of our students are very far below grade level. So the way you address that is you still have to expose those grade-level skills and we have to focus on having them grow at a faster rate by exposure to content at the grade level and simultaneously doing that backfilling. It's really hard to do, but that's the job.
Well, again, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this particular topic tonight, but I would think that that's something we wanna follow up on.
Absolutely.
My suspicion is that we have some kids that are multiple grade levels behind.
We do.
And so the point is that I would want as part of the plan, again, I'm not asking for it tonight, what that remediation is and what that means 'cause my sense is that logistically, we're gonna have to plan something. Okay, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I don't need the answer tonight. It's really more the factor. The one thing on the school, the scorecard, and I understand why these are kind of by physical building, but you'll see if I ask, in a sense, Barber, being the immersion program, is its own program and the program in the school happened to be in one entity. But you have other things like gifted and cap and so forth. That are we going to, you know, if I look at your slide that lists, are there things like that where we're going to also show those programs? Or is it literally just at the building level, if you will?
We can break out by academy and by special program. The reason those three have special scorecards is because they are only three K eight buildings.
Yeah, you said that. It wasn't a question.
But yes, we can pull out, yes, we can study by, not only can we just, can we look at teacher teams? We couldn't, we can break out by program and we can break out by academy at the high school level.
Okay, that's, that's all I, I think, one quick, sorry, I wanted, I wrote a bunch of notes. So under the climate and culture, the one thing I will say is, I assume that things like Let's Talk would be categorized somehow. So you're gonna have to have some criteria to how to group the topics. Okay, so we'll report on that. That's, that was kind of where I was headed. The other thing was on the date for September twenty-sixth, talking about the review of the data. And again, I know some of us are slow-witted and it's late at night and I get even slower unfortunately, is when we do the review of the data, again, I assume it's in decision ed and I likewise assume that each building, each principal, each teacher will have access to decision ed, so they will see their numbers. It's not like they're handed a bunch of, you know, either spreadsheet or sheets, that this will be interactive and they'll be able to run, if you will, their numbers.
By October twenty-fourth. September twenty, September twenty-sixth is about, which is tomorrow, is about principals aligning school goals. Because they've taken their fall map testing, so they now have that data. For how they did in the, so they have their, essentially their pre-test data. And then what we do, and the map window has occurred. And so now we are going to then do that work of aligning a school-wide goal based on how we did last year and what our pre-test data tells us and what we will accomplish by the end of the academic year over the next two school improvement cycles. We have one that ends in winter and one that ends in the spring.
Yeah, I was, actually, so I should've been clearer. I wasn't, I, I understand that that was the principals meeting, but 'cause it had reviewed data, it triggered in me.
That will not, that will not be in decision ed yet.
Tomorrow, we've pulled everyone's report for them and provided their school data specifically. Moving forward, they'll be able to access everything from their data dashboard. But for tomorrow, we've pulled that for everyone.
Okay, and things like, so let me just, 'cause this was the last note, thankfully, is that things like subgroupings that you talked about on the November twenty-eighth, I assume all those kinds of mechanical things, again, is all part of the same tools. So it's not like we have to do special efforts on all this. We're gonna set it. And I think the other thing I'm going to ask is, I also assume likewise that we have longitudinal studies in mind so that if we come up with categories, we're not gonna be changing these categories year after year so that we do have at least some baselines that, that in five years or what have you, we will have the longitudinal.
The only thing that would prohibit longitudinal studies would be re-norming of state tests. We certainly have no plans to, we certainly have no plans to move away from the core things that we are focusing on in the scorecard.
I'm gonna let Mrs. McCullough raise her question.
I don't have a list.
Okay.
I just have one. I'll segue on your test. So every year, I think to ask this question, I don't, they take the test in March, the park. It's electronic. And we can't see the scores until the last day of October, pretty much. And yet, everything we're doing and focusing on, so can somebody explain to me why? I mean, obviously, it's a state situation, but, I mean, it's electronic and we actually, as a district, have the scores, but they're embargoed.
We don't even get the scores until very early into the next school year. We aren't sitting on them in April.
No, 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 I totally understand that they come at the beginning of the school year. It's a two-part question then. Why are they embargoed? And why do they take so long to get to us?
They're embargoed so everyone sees them, sees them at the same time and the data isn't clean. The state does not wanna, because this is used for support and accountability purposes, the state does not wanna release these until they feel like the, the data is clean and things change all the time.
So have we, so once we get, have, have we had to go back and say you made a mistake on this? Or, I, I still don't understand the embargoing. Once they send them out to the districts, if they, everybody sends, gets them on the same day.
They were, they have us review them. And for us, that's reviewing twenty-eight thousand students times multiple. It's a very painstaking process for every seven hundred and fifty.
We can't change the scores. I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, I don't understand.
It's a connection between enrollment, direct cert numbers, attendance, and then the assessment data itself. So home versus serving versus accountable school, there's three different categories of school.
Just a couple of examples. We serve students in Roosevelt, for example, and ILC in our own district. We have a twenty-five to thirty percent mobility rate in some of our buildings. Students have a common SIS number, which is fine as long as they move within the state, but some kids are moving in and out of the state. So there is a massive amount of change that happens statewide after that point in time. So, so that, that, those are just some of the tangible examples that occur. Dr. Wolf could give you guys a very thorough analysis.
But is there anything we can do with our congressional people to say, hey, this information is important and this delay in receiving it has, you know, put us into?
Mrs. McCullough, I do think that one of the goals, switching to IAR, is to get quicker feedback on your data. That's one of the objectives. Part of it is a vendor, the vendor of Park really let the state down and underperformed. And so.
Yeah, but the previous one that we did was.
Well, that was paper and pencil, so that was the excuse then and there was writing. So there's always, yeah.
I asked my, my question.
I, I will be in Springfield and I'm going to have a chance to see some legislators. I'm also gonna have a chance to see our state superintendent and believe me, I will make sure he, he understands all of our collective displeasure about the delay. And I think he will hear that from other superintendents as well.
Go ahead, I have one too, but go ahead.
More comments, I guess, than questions. So, and maybe I should just wait and see how it comes out, but I guess I'll get my comments out there before it's finalized. The first comment has. The first comment has to do with the difference between leading and lagging indicators. And I heard Mrs. Detman say the elementary school scorecard would focus on map growth. And later on, in the achievements section, it does say attainment, and you did mention Park there, but then it refers to the on-track graduation rate. And map and on-track graduation rates are both leading indicators. I understand why, they're easier to use, they're better to use, you get the data more fresher, and the problem I have is, nobody else looks at it. I mean, people outside in the community, they're looking at the lagging indicators. They're looking at our park scores, or whatever it's going to be now. They're looking at our actual graduation rate. And I don't want to, us to create school report cards that are focused solely on things that other people don't look at. So I would hope that part of our school report card would actually include a focus on the park, or whatever it's going to be now, and our actual graduation rate.
Mr. Rollins, I think you're going to be very pleased. You will see that graduation rate is in there in a huge, huge weight, along with graduation rate by subgroup. You will see, and we can't get into all of the specifics because we want you to see this holistically, but I can assure you that Park, SAT, and all, and graduation rate and all lagging indicators are very, very heavily weighted. But we do acknowledge the need to measure leading indicators as well. But Dr. Munson spent almost a year interacting with principals, our district leadership team, and literally hundreds, if not thousands, of stakeholders to ensure that we have the right balance between leading and lagging indicators. So I'm cautiously optimistic that you'll be pleased that we've struck the correct balance at all levels of our organization when we roll this out. Because we very much agree with you. We have to be honest about where we are towards those lagging indicators, but we also have to give credit for schools making progress towards those lagging indicators. And I think you'll see both. Anything you'd want to add, Dr. Munson?
And then just on the graduation rate, just because I've never been able to figure out what this difference is, so we're going to focus on schools. We'll have these school report cards. If you look at our individual high schools, they've actually made progress on the graduation rates that doesn't seem to be reflected in our district-wide graduation rate. So if we're going to be focusing on school report cards, I think there are still some district-level metrics that we're going to have to continue to look at, including our district-wide graduation rate. And I don't know whether the same would be true, there's no reason why the same would be true with park scores. I've never been able to figure out what the difference is between the high school graduation rates and our district-wide graduation rates, and no one's been able to explain it to me. So that may be the only example, the only isolated example, but it's something that we need to think about.
Yes.
I guess the only other comment I'll have is, and the two liked comments. One is this sort of let a thousand flowers bloom approach. I'm willing to give it a try, but, you know, there has to be, we have to step in quickly for schools that aren't showing results. If there are schools that are not showing results, you know, historically, I don't know that we've stepped in very quickly. We've given people a lot of lead time, a lot of rope. And if we're going to start giving, if we're going to decentralize decision-making, we still have to hold people accountable, and we have to step in because in those schools, there are kids that are not getting adequate education, and we need to do something about it. That leads to my second comment, which is not a comment about this district. It's about a comment about human nature and what has been reported nationwide, which as you move to these sorts of accountability systems, you create an incentive for people to fudge numbers. And so I hope that we will not be naive enough to think that we'll be immune from that, and that we will be on the lookout for that, and that we will have systems in place to ensure that that doesn't happen, or that we will investigate any allegations that that's happened. To the point where, if we're really going to do this, I don't know if we should even set up a special part of Let's Talk, or a hotline, or something, for people to report allegations that that's going on. Something, somebody should think about.
Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Rollins. And moving, just the one thing I would offer is, I think the best way to look at this approach, I wouldn't characterize it as the philosophy of kind of letting a thousand flowers bloom. I think an oldie but a goodie for management theory is Peters and Waterman, In Search of Axle, once they talked about loose tight leadership. I think we are going to be very tight on things like making sure that we're very clear on what success looks like at the school level. We're going to be very clear on approving school-wide goals. We're going to be very clear on making sure that we review team of teacher goals, where we'll provide some of that flexibility you described. I think we'll be more at the individual classroom level. But we are going to allow innovation at the school level, but it is not going to be a situation where we are going to just blindly accept school goals or PLC goals. There's going to be support, as well as some oversight on that, because we don't want to allow schools to set goals that they hit, and then they fail to move the lag. So we've got to make sure that whatever those important outcomes are, if schools are successful, we want to see that they're making progress in the big picture. So I think it'll be more of a combination. It will certainly be decentralized in some ways, but we are not going to just open it wide open. There are going to be things we're very tight about.
All right, I have a question for Dr. Vosper. This is, because it's about principals, and you deal with principals a lot. Am I correct in understanding that we are asking the principals to take on a new and different role? Or is it this something that they really have been doing all along? And we, I mean, when I think about the job of being a principal, it's everything from, you know, keeping parents happy, you know, addressing parent concerns, you know, all kinds of stuff, you know, filling schedules out and all that kind of stuff. But now it seems to me like the major responsibility of a principal is accountability for student achievement. So, and do we have buy-in from the principals?
Right, so, great, great question, great observation. I would say, the first question, the answer is, no, this isn't really a lot of new things for them. They're all at different levels, as you know. You have some principals that are in their first year in a building, some that have been there nine, ten years. So depending on their own longevity in the district and the building, a lot of the work that we're describing tonight is work that's been happening in their buildings. What's different is the shift to more strategic alignment and making sure that, as Mrs. Detman talked about, that our goals are aligned standards, and really making sure, and I think this addresses one of Mr. Escobedo's concerns, that there's more of a short-cycle process to this. That's kind of new. And again, I think a few of the board members have read the book, the No Excuses book, and that's really about short-cycle goals. So we are developing that, that's evolving. Some schools started that process a year and a half, two years ago. Some schools are starting this year. But your question is valid in that the principals in the past, twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, were managers of a school. They managed the building, they made sure the halls were clean, they focused on the aesthetics of the building, hiring teachers, making sure supplies were ordered. And now, the job is more complex, and there's a lot of responsibility around leading adults, teachers, and instructional leadership, and learning about what's happening in their schools, leading their PLCs. We've had PLCs for eight years, again, at all levels of ability. And what's different this year is really trying to align the goals and then monitor the work of the goals to make sure progress is being made at the PLC level. A lot of work that the principals have been doing the last few years, a lot of their trainings have been around individual teachers and evaluation, which is really important, because we've got to have proficient-level teachers in our classrooms. But what's going to move the schools is groups of teachers working together in PLCs to do what they think's best for kids. And so, all these things we're asking principals and we're discussing tonight are things that they've been doing at different levels. We have to get more consistent with our expectations at the district level, and then ensure alignment with their goals and resources.
Okay, thank you.
I got one. Mr. Rollins, I do know the answer to why there's a difference between the district and the schools. It has to do with the state, two years ago, deciding to categorize, outplace students back to the, as a district, as the serving school, and not Guilford or one of the other three high schools. And there's still some follow-up with the state on that because the numbers seem pretty excessive to be outplaced, but we're working on that.
By outplaced, you're talking about like the special ed kids who are sent?
Correct. When I called the state a few weeks ago, this has been a back and forth for a while. They couldn't give me the specific criteria, but yes, they're talking about students that are outplaced in the special programs for special ed primarily. But we're still working on getting them to finalize exactly who those students are, because the number looks a little bigger than what we actually have outplaced.
All right, thanks.
Okay, great discussion. We'll move on then now to, unless your team has anything else they want to report on. Okay, we'll move on to the action.
The only thing I just want to say is, I don't want the board to think this is the one time we're going to talk about this. Again, I want to remind everyone, we've heard you that this needs to stay in front of the board. We want to keep this in front of the board and the community. So we do have two very extensive, probably the majority of the meeting will be focused on those two that we've promised. And this will move from very general tonight, very high level, to increasingly specific in terms of last year's performance, and also talking about future plans to make things better this year. Because no matter whether we were extremely successful at the school level or whether we have a lot of room to improve, all of our schools need to improve next year. And so we'll be talking about that journey, and that will be something that we will keep in front of you on a regular basis. So I love the energy and the enthusiasm around this topic, and it almost felt like, gosh, we felt like if we don't get it in today, when will this opportunity come back? I can assure you, we are committed, not only to the ones that are scheduled here, but really, really regular conversation around the scorecard and the work that we're doing. The committee and the whole structure, I think, is going to help a bunch with that.
Mr. McCullough? Point of clarification, are outplaced, does outplaced also include expelled?
No, no, those are counted as non-graduates.
Those are non-graduates. So by special programs, you truly do mean special ed?
I'm getting clarification from the state. They, when I called them, they couldn't give me an answer, so.
But they make the decision on what it is?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to action items. The first action item tonight is the course proposal with contract for the pathway for collaborative leadership teams. This was presented at our last board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Connor, just a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have coordinator call the roll on this action item fourteen A.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Seiko?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our second action item is the Rockford Board of Education School District 205 Healthcare Plan Document that was presented at our last board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Coordinator call the roll.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Seiko?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our remaining items are all board policies, unless there's, we all do them all together. I just want to point one thing. Attorney Holy has told me that Board Policy 2.100 has been pulled. Okay, all right. So the items are 2.220, which is the board meeting procedure, 4.10, operational services, fiscal and business management, 4.60, operational services, purchase and contracts, 4.110, transportation, equal employment, general personnel workplace harassment, general personnel abuse and neglected child reporting, and general personnel staff development program. So is there a motion and a second to approve these board policy revisions?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll have coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Seiko?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Any other new business for tonight? If not, I will take a motion and a second for the board to reconvene and close session in about five minutes downstairs.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Connor, second by somebody, Mr. Dixon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pose the same sign. Okay. Okay.